Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission to order. Roll call, Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Doe is absent. Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt is absent. Given that Commissioners Doe and Reinhardt are the Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission respectively, the Commission rules, under Commission rules, I would entertain a motion on the part of the Commissioners who are here this evening to appoint an acting Chairman for this evening's meeting.
Well, I motion that we ask Commissioner Minier if he would chair.
I was going to say Commissioner Anderson because he's...
Oh, well.
Commissioner Anderson, yeah, he's been here for a while and I think it's his turn to get used to it now because he will be pretty soon in the line.
I see. Well, yeah, I am rather much the junior member here, but I'm willing to serve in this role if that's your way.
Please be.
That would be super.
Okay, I'll slide over.
I've done it many times, so I think I have other people should get a chance.
So we'll consider that an action by concurrence of all three Commissioners for the record?
Yes, that would be great.
Yes, okay. With that, I'll turn the meeting over to Acting Chairman Anderson.
One moment while I recombobulate myself.
You want someone sitting on that side of you?
No, that's all right. I think I can adjust. I'll just put this over here and be in the middle.
Okay. Make sure you use the hammer if you don't behave.
I will. This rarely gets used. I'll have to at least use it to close the meeting.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. All right, we've already had the call to order and the roll call, so let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I motion to adopt the agenda of October 13th, 2016.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar. Please note that the items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collaboratively by one motion adopting the Planning Department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the Commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the Chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Well, I would have to abstain myself because I was not at that meeting.
Oh, I see.
No?
We'll just continue that item to the next meeting then.
All right. Oh, and I forgot about the agenda item. We have one item at the end of the meeting, items initiated by staff on the standards for home-size lot coverage floor area ratio in central Brisbane. And since we have a number of Commissioners absent till at night, I wanted to suggest that we continue that on another meeting.
I agree.
Do we need to vote on that or just some of...
All right, we're going to move this one.
All right, so we'll reschedule item H, number one, to another meeting.
Which item you have not cleared.
I believe you're referencing item I, one?
Yeah.
Oh, on the one on the website, it's currently H. I don't know if the printed one's that.
In the printer, it's I one.
It's I. Okay.
Initiated by the Commission.
I'm going off of what's on the Internet and what's printed is different, so I guess the official record is item I.
One.
Could I borrow, could you maybe put your printed one?
There you can have one.
I usually don't use paper. I apologize for...
That's right.
...the confusion. Look at these. All right. Next up on the agenda then is the approval of the draft action minutes. We don't have, that was continued. Now we're on to oral communications.
Did we vote on the agenda?
We couldn't because we only have two people who are present for that. Oh, the, oh, sorry, the agenda.
Agenda.
Yeah, we did.
We did vote on the agenda.
You actually approved.
I'm causing confusion here because I returned to the agenda after we approved it.
It's okay.
Apologize for that.
It's okay.
Are we ready to move on to oral communications?
Yes.
All right. If anyone present has anything that they would like to address the Commission that's not on tonight's agenda, it may do so now. Note takers? All right. Written communication. We have received a number of items here. The 16th Annual Housing Leadership Day is coming up on Friday, October 14th. Received a flyer for that. We also have a copy of the Bay Area Monitor. And we have received a letter concerning use permit application UP 616 for 500 Sierra Point Road from Sean Sweeney on 8 Margaret. Is it appropriate for me to read any of these at this time or do I wait?
The other item that's, the correspondence related to the item, you can just wait till that.
You'll have to have the item. All right. New business. Item number one is public hearing for 500 Sierra Point Road use permit UP 616. This is a use permit to modify the parking regulations to allow two uncovered on-street parking spaces where one covered and two uncovered off-street spaces are required for the existing 860-square-foot home and proposed conversion of a 538-square-foot accessory building to a secondary dwelling unit. Very cool, cool design applicant Seth Bowden, owner, APN 007431140. The applicant present for, yes, oh, there you are. Would the applicant like to...
Can we start with the staff report?
To start with the staff.
I'm sorry. Please, staff, please give a report on this.
Sure. All right, so the applicant is requesting approval of a use permit to modify the parking regulations at 500 Sierra Point Road. The request would be to provide two uncovered on-street parking spaces where the code requires one covered space and two uncovered spaces all on-site. So just a brief summary of the existing development on the property. We have a two-bedroom, single-family home under 900 square feet in size. The parking demand per the municipal code for that size of dwelling on this particular lot would be two on-site spaces, one of which would have to be covered. Again, there are no on-site parking spaces currently provided, and there is one on-street parking space adjacent to the property's front lot line. The proposal would be to legalize a one-bedroom secondary dwelling unit on the property within an existing accessory building. The unit would be just under 600 square feet, and the parking space requirement for that size of secondary dwelling unit would be one on-site space. So the resulting parking requirement for the single-family home and SDU would be three spaces on the site. The applicant is proposing improvement of the right-of-way in front of the property to provide an additional on-street parking space. So just some site photos to give some context to the applicant's request. So here, this is taken in front of, in front of the home, and you can see that the topography of the right-of-way, so all of the rock face that you see, is actually in the right-of-way. It is not on the property. Results in the home itself and the property line being elevated about 15 feet maximum above the street elevation. And the parking area that's currently provided on the street is also in view in this photo. So here's another view showing the approximate area of cut beyond the car that is parked here. And you can also see in this photo some pine trees that are located on the adjacent property upslope of the proposed area for improvement. Topographic survey was prepared by the applicant for the project. So again, this illustrates using contours the actual topographic changes in the, not only on the property itself, but within the right-of-way and the existing, this shows further the kind of odd shape of the existing parking area within the public right-of-way. It's not improved to current city standards. So the applicant's parking plan, which is illustrated here, would improve not only the existing parking space on-site, but add an additional parking space. So per our design requirements for on-street parking, the minimum dimensions are eight feet by 20 feet, so that's an eight-foot by 40-foot area for two parking spaces. The area of cut would be retained by a retaining wall. And here's some conceptual details of that wall prepared by the applicant. Just a reminder that the city engineer has purview over any improvements within the right-of-way. So the final design and layout of the retaining wall would be something that is subject to the city engineer's approval. That would also require geotechnical analysis, feasibility studies, soil reports, et cetera. So this is an approximate conceptualization of what the retaining wall may look like, but after going through the process with the city engineer, it may ultimately differ in the exact design. And then just a recognition of our current parking code, which does allow the city to recognize on-street parking adjacent to a front property line, as long as the site has a frontage of at least 37 and 1/2 feet, which the site does. So in order to approve a use permit to modify parking regulations, several findings have to be made. The first two are the standard use permit findings in that the project would not, would comply with the general plan and not impact adjacent uses and structures, nor impact the health, safety, and general welfare. So in this case, the proposal does meet these findings. No change to the underlying land use is proposed. It would remain a single-family land use. Secondary dwelling units are allowed under the R1 regulations. No change to that. The existing accessory building where the proposed secondary dwelling unit would be located does maintain historic encroachments into the side and rear setbacks. However, it's already considered habitable space. The city has issued building permits over the years that have allowed its improvement in the interior. Because, because of that fact, the conversion to the SDU would comply with the regulations for non-conforming structures contained in BMC Chapter 17.38. This application was routed to the city engineer, the building official, and the North County Fire Authority, who did not raise concerns. The building official and city engineer both have required soils reports and geotech studies to be provided prior to any building or grading permits being issued. We've additionally recommended a condition of approval that prior to sign off on the secondary dwelling unit permit, the applicant would need to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the building official that the accessory building where the secondary dwelling unit would be located complies with all applicable fire and building code requirements. And the findings specific to the parking use permit include that strict enforcement would not be required. In this case, the proposed on-street parking space would be located within the public right-of-way. It's uncovered parking. The regulatory burden on monitoring the use of uncovered parking spaces in the right-of-way is fairly low. The on-street parking space would improve the parking availability in the neighborhood, and also any future expansion of either the home or the secondary dwelling unit would trigger new review to make sure that the parking requirements are being met. The second finding is that the, it would not create or intensify a shortage of on-street parking. Obviously, parking is a challenge in central Brisbane in this neighborhood as well. In this particular case, the project actually proposes improving on-street parking to add an additional space. And again, it would also improve the existing space such that it meets our actual dimension And the last finding is that full compliance with the parking requirements is not reasonably feasible due to existing structural or site constraints. In this particular case, for this property, provision of on-site parking is not reasonably feasible, and that's primarily because of its elevation above the elevation of the street, which again ranges from about five feet at its low point to almost 15 feet. This eliminates the potential to accommodate on-site parking without extensive grading of the hillside beyond what the applicant is currently proposing. And then in terms of on-street parking, due to the length of the frontage of this property, only two spaces could reasonably be accommodated due to our minimum dimension requirements of at least eight by 20 feet. So the applicant's plan actually represents the maximum amount of on-street parking that could reasonably be provided along the property frontage. So staff is recommending conditional approval by adoption of the draft resolution, subject to the findings and conditions contained therein. And I want to note, as Chairman Anderson said, we did receive a late-mail item regarding this project from a neighbor who had concerns with the excavation that's proposed. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, can I start?
Go ahead.
So this is a beautiful chert, it looks like chert rock formation. I don't know how far it goes in, in this area. It's just beautiful. How long has that secondary, it looked, when I was reading through this, it looked as though the secondary structure had been around for 20 years? Is that correct?
The building itself?
The secondary, the cottage.
Right, so the building has been there prior to us having records for this property. The secondary unit, the renting of that space as a secondary unit, I, I'm not sure the length of time that's been going on, but it, but it has been, at least in the recent past, been rented.
Well, so my question is, I don't know enough about the rock formation. If we actually put in the two parking places, you know, how, how far back that rock formation goes? I mean, it's a gorgeous rock formation. It, just, it's lovely. And, you know, I'm concerned about just destroying such a gorgeous habitat to the neighborhood for a structure that's been there for many, many, many years. And I don't, I don't know how many other people feel the same way, but that is a concern I want to bring up. Is there anywhere else that could accommodate the parking rather than actually going into that rock formation? I think there's a picture of it somewhere.
Well, maybe we can look at the topo survey.
Yeah.
So, which I pulled up here on your screen. So this property's frontage is a little over 50 feet. I think it's about 57. I mean, to give a short answer, there, there isn't a lot of room to provide a second parking space within the limited frontage of this property. And you can, so you can see on the topo survey where the existing space is, which is that flat area adjacent to the curb cut. You've got maybe six feet going to the rear or to the side property line, and then...
Can you use the pointer so other people can figure it out too?
If it, if it can be seen. All right, so this is the existing area that's used for parking in the street. So this is the access stairway for the property, and this is the side property line. So other than the area that's already flat, this is the area you have to work with along the property frontage.
I mean, it could be, when you make the cut, it's going to be gorgeous underneath. It's just that, I just don't know. You know, it's rather spectacular.
Yeah. May I, to the Chair?
Yes.
In some cases, they did allow the, to have the offset, off-street parking across the street. Not on the, my mic is on, though. Can you hear me now? Okay. In some, some instances, I've seen that they have, they have required, if it's not possible within the right-of-way, close to the property, you can do, you know, offset, off-street parking on the other side of the roadway. And there was one case in, I think on the, I think it's on the King's Road where that was done. So is it possible that you can explore, see if it can, it can, can be done on the other side of the street?
So coincidentally, the next public hearing after this one is for a use permit request for parking at the site directly across the street from this property. So the roadway at this intersection is already improved on the north side of the street.
Okay. The other question I have is regarding the retaining wall itself. And it's, it's in excess of six feet. Normally, it's almost, it's a seven-feet-tall retaining wall. And for that tall retaining wall, we need to, I think as a planning commissioner, commissions, we need to see the actual, how it's going to look in terms of the visual impact. And we don't have any such thing in these photographs here. So I think if we do approve such a thing, before we do that, I'd like to see at least the visualization of that, how it's going to be. We don't want just a flat wall, you know, concrete walls sitting there. So that, that will be my concern before approving this tonight. I'd like to see the more details, and I know that the city engineer is going to review the design of this, but we like to see how it's going to look, and, which is not available here. And also how it's going to impact the current view versus the one with the retaining wall. You know, the, currently, we do have a beautiful view of that rock formation. After the retaining wall, how it's going to be? So there got to be some kind of a comparison study here to show what they're going to be. So that's missing. And as far as the covered parking, as far as the covered parking, I think, I think we do have the, we need two, we need at least one covered parking, and this particular site doesn't have that. So, but am I reading correctly? You need three, three parking spaces?
Yes, due to the size of the single-family home and the, because it has two bedrooms. Even though it's under 900 square feet, it has two bedrooms. Under our new parking code, that triggers the requirement for two spaces.
So we are, we are here looking at two variants inside. One is...
Not a variance, use permit.
Amen. And use permit, but it doesn't meet the, the code right now, I mean, municipal code, because it doesn't have, it has only two, two uncovered parking, and it doesn't have one covered parking. So we, we are making two exceptions here. I won't say a variance then.
You would be acting to recognize no on-site parking on this site to serve the intended uses.
And also one less parking, because they need total three.
Right, so the parkings provided would be less than what is required. That's what you would be approving, if you chose to approve, that's what you'd be approving.
So it looks as though the cut next door, I mean, I can see a cut, but is there any way that it could be cut geologically without actually putting in the retaining wall, or it would have to have the retaining wall? That's, that was my question. I...
I don't know about that part.
Yeah, no, I would like the...
I, yeah, so there will be forthcoming, or, you know, if this is approved, there will be geotechnical analysis required to determine the amount of cut, the location of cut, et cetera. But I guess I'm confused. Did you, I mean, it will still have to be excavated to make room.
It would have to be excavated, how deep then?
Well, to be level with the ground.
Well, if it has to be done, it has to be done. I was just, I was trying to think what to do about that gorgeous rock formation.
Mr. Swickie was explaining the content of your question. So if, that, so whether or not the actual rock face itself could be preserved rather than being covered or retained by a separate retaining wall?
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Right, so that is something that would have to come out of the geotechnical analysis of whether it would be stable enough or not.
Right. So, okay, so those are just some of my concerns about this particular location. Of course, there would be cars parked in front of it anyway, so...
Yeah, actually, we're not increasing the parking, we're reducing the parking.
It's actually, huh, okay.
And the other concern I have, this will be a public area of parking, so it's possible that these people will not even be able to park there, because anybody can park there, right? It's not a dedicated parking space. So in order to have a house, you should have at least one dedicated parking space.
Hmm. Okay.
I also have a couple of questions of staff. Is Sierra Point Road more than 20 feet wide at this point?
In this particular location, yes. It's at an intersection of Sierra Point and San Benito.
So there'd be no circumstances under which a road widening would be triggered?
Not that the city engineer anticipated, however, he did have a requirement that any of the improvements that, moving forward, would have to make sure there is a 25-foot travelway that's maintained. So I think...
That would trigger a road widening, is what you're saying? Widen the road to 25 feet?
No, 20 feet.
20 feet, okay.
Yeah, which they have currently. The city engineer would ensure that the project design would not reduce the width of the roadway. It's a backwards way of saying it.
So the report also mentioned that clearly it would be a lot more expensive to do additional excavation, but I was wondering if any investigation went into whether it would be feasible to put three spaces there, nose-in, or perhaps diagonal? And is there any notion of what marginal cost that might be at?
I don't believe that a, well, the applicant may be able to respond to that, actually, since I know you guys went through a couple rounds of design options. Maybe you can ask that of him.
And could you explain how, excuse me, the report says that the parking is improved here, but by observation, it seems like there's already two cars parked in these spaces. Is the improvement that an illegal space is becoming a legal space, or what is the parking improvement?
Sure, so let's go back to the survey area. So the existing parking area, which is this flat area here on the topo. Everything rises again. The dimensions of that space do not comply with the code requirements for an on-street parking space. Could you fit too many Coopers in it or smaller cars? Sure. That's the case in a lot of properties where they aren't providing code-compliant spaces, yet people can park on them. So the proposal would improve this existing space to the city required dimensions and add an additional space that meets the city dimensions. So net, net one, new space.
But the net one new space then is in the same area where people are illegally parking?
I don't believe that there is adequate room to park. So here's the curb line.
Right.
This is the curb. So the roadway is here. So unless someone is taking up the roadway...
Yeah, there are cars there.
Yeah.
Well, there, maybe there...
They're illegally parked.
They shouldn't be, perhaps, because the, the edge of curb, unless there's a, any white striping, which is not shown on this survey, but parking is not allowed beyond, to encroach within the 20-foot travelway. So even if cars are parking there, we would not recognize that as a legal spot.
All right. And finally, the secondary unit is already recognized as habitable space. That's correct?
Correct.
So could you explain what the additional benefit is to recognizing it as a legal secondary unit? secondary unit as opposed to allowing it to stay in its current status?
If it remained in its current status, it would not be allowed to be rented as a secondary dwelling unit. It would not be allowed to have sleeping quarters in it. So one of our code requirements is that detached accessory buildings may not be used for sleeping quarters. So the alternative would be that this would simply be an office space. That would not be rented. That would not accommodate, you know, a second family potentially on this property. I think the city has policies in its housing element of the general plan that encourage, where feasible, the provision of secondary dwelling units as, you know, one of the ways that we can help meet the housing need. So, you know, if the trade-off, that's really the trade-off then you'd be looking at is whether the non-secondary dwelling unit condition is preferable for whatever reasons you may think.
Any more questions or should we open it?
No.
Can open the public hearing.
All right, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shall we start with the applicant? Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Well, perhaps after the applicant, you can come up and ask.
Yeah.
Could you fill out a card?
Hi, my name's Jerry Cool. Let's, let's start with what was originally required for the, to, in order to make this parking legal. Can you, excuse me, Julia? Can you pull up this sheet, the one that has the, the cut? That's A1. That's A2. Okay, so currently we have with, with the proposed plan, okay. So if you're looking at.
Use the.
Yeah. There we go. Can you see this thing? Where's it, there it is, oh, okay. So this line here would be what would need to be cut out of this hillside in order to get three parking spaces on site.
Okay, so that's three parking spaces.
That's three parking spaces on site. Now, the difference in elevation of grade from this point to this point is now 16 feet as opposed to seven feet. And that would be the max, seven feet. And, and part of that is also that's seven feet if there's, well, let me finish one point at a time. This cut would also undermine the foundation of the house, eliminate the entranceway and take out 6,000-plus cubic feet of rock out of this hill. Now we have massive retaining walls. And, you know, we're undermining the house's foundation.
So you said 16 feet in the back?
16 feet in the back.
And did you also consider asking for a variance just to pull that back? So there's still three spaces, but half in the public right of way? Do you have that as a comparison?
I did not, but even bringing that back, we're still, the height of our retaining walls still are 10-plus.
10-plus, uh-huh.
Yeah. They're just considerably higher. And then also, we can't build any structure in the, in the public right of way. So we still don't have the covered space.
So I have a question. What kind of rock is that, do you know? The Franciscan or is it, it just seems like it?
Now, the height of the walls now, now you're asking, now, once the geotech, we've talked to the geotech. Now, we're hoping that that, that seven-foot wall would be the maximum. What we're hoping is that we can round the top of that cut and bring that wall down. Because, you know, if we angle the cut where the, where the retaining wall comes in enough, we, we can drop the size of the wall. So that's our hope, but we don't know that until we actually get the geotech report. But, you know, this is a solid rock, this whole, this whole face. It's just all rock, there's nothing. And I've consulted with a few excavators. And the cost of just cutting this out and getting the walls in is over $200,000. And it's just, it would leave massive ugly walls. And then that's not even getting into how to deal with the foundation of the house, undermining that.
Oh, you're talking about this.
Doing, doing, doing.
Doing it this way.
Right. I also looked into a proposal of trying to build up a roadway, a driveway in order to come in from the side and trying to get up on top and get some parking in the, on the side, but there's not enough room. You can't get up fast enough. So you're still cutting into the hillside. And there's not enough room to get a structure on the side of the house. So it'd have to be in the back. So then, and again, you're, the cost of getting this is like well over $200,000 for any of this. So that's where we came up with the proposal to provide. Now, like we were talking about before, this is not a legal spot. They say you have a spot, but if you try to put two cars here, both ends, both of their tail ends are sticking out in the road. Lost me there. So now at this point. If you can go back to the other one. So at this point, now we're cutting much less into this hillside and, and trying to keep as much impact of the hillside as, as minimal as possible. And again, we're hoping after we talk to the geoengineer that we can round that hillside. We can kind of taper it up so that we're leaving as much as possible and bring the amount of walls down. I gave, I gave, when I put those two drawings up, I gave the maximum and probably the least. So I was giving an option. Any other particular questions?
You, you mentioned that if you, if you cut 10 feet, then you can have a three parking space?
I don't know exactly, but I'd have to, I'd have to figure it out. It's over 10. That'd be the lowest wall would be.
If you look at it, between seven feet and 10 feet, in terms of the, the wall itself, if you design it such a way that it looks pretty.
But you're also digging out more of the hillside. And, you know, I, I know this isn't a factor for the commission, but it is a factor of why this site has no parking. It's the cost of excavating this hill out. Or, or the cheapest I've come to anything other than what we're looking at now is probably 150 for cutting into this.
Well, I understand the cost part of it, but at the same time, I like to figure it out how we can comply with at least one requirement.
Right.
Right now, we, we are, we are asking for the.
Well, we are actually complying. If you read the code, the code says full compliance with the parking requirement is not, is not reasonably feasible due to existing structural or site constraints. So that's what we're complying with. I mean, we're, we're doing our best to try to fit some parking on this lot. I mean, these, these houses have been rented. People have been living in them at this point for a long time. What we're trying to do is develop some kind of parking and help the neighborhood out and trying to keep as much of that hillside as possible.
Yeah, but my concern is that now you're trying to legalize that. So once you're trying to legalize that, then at least you should comply with some of the requirements of the, you know, the parking requirements that we.
Well, according to the staff report, we are. That's what I'm trying, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Staff report, as I mentioned, that you need three parking spaces and you just have two. And that's also, none of them are dedicated parking space.
Right.
Right? Both of them are available to anybody there. So if the.
Is it possible to make one of them a dedicated spot?
I really don't know. And, but the thing is, you should, as, as a, as a single family home or any home.
Yes.
You must have, you should have at least one dedicated parking, because if you come back from a grocery shopping and parking space is taken, are you going to double park there? So that's my biggest concern here, that if you had at least one dedicated parking, I will be a little happy with that, but.
So what you're saying is that they should put a.
I really, I, you know, it doesn't have to be.
Put on it or?
You know, it doesn't have to be covered.
No, we can't, we can't build a structure in the public right of way.
It doesn't have to be covered. It can be open, open parking, but at least it's dedicated to the person living there. You know? Right now.
We can consult with staff about that, but I think unless they go all the way back to the 16-foot height, there.
It doesn't have to be, it said in 10.
But that would be on the public right of way and staff can confirm they can't build a structure if it's parked.
They can't build a structure in the right of way and they cannot designate a public parking space for the use of a particular property, even if it's in front of that property.
In the public right of way.
But the code does recognize that you, for purposes of meeting the parking standards, it gives you credit for onsite or on-street parking to some extent right there. So, you know, it may not functionally meet what you're trying to, what you think is desirable, which I think most people would concur is desirable. But per the city code, as, as on the screen, it does give, you know, credit for those on-street spaces.
So the, the municipal code doesn't require you to have at least dedicated parking for the, for that particular house?
The code does, but the code also allows for use permit requests in circumstances where they meet the findings that were outlined in the staff report, where that parking cannot be provided. So the request itself is to not comply with what the code would otherwise require. That is what you are considering. So if you can make the findings, then ostensibly that request would be compliant with the code.
So if they have three parking spaces rather than two, then that will make it a little bit more.
They would still be non-conforming.
They will be non-conforming, but at least you have a possibility.
They would conform in regards to the number of spaces provided.
At least there will be a possibility of one space available. Among the probability of having one empty space increases, well, two versus three. So. Did you do the actual calculation to see how far, how far you, how much you're to dig in order to have three, you know, on-street parking?
Three on-street parking?
Yeah, I mean, right now you have.
You can't put three on-street parking, it's not wide enough.
But you, you can put three, two, right now you're proposing two on-street parking, right?
Yes.
So in order to put three, is there any possible way?
So what are you, what are you talking about? Like doing them diagonally?
Yeah, I mean, you just mentioned that you can increase the, the height of the retaining wall to 10 feet and you may possibly have three parking spaces.
How is that?
Uh, 10, so, okay, let me guess, let me calculate right here. So right now, we are at, what's that, 57. From 57, 58, 59, 60, 61. In order to get a standard parking space going in, I would probably have 49 to 62. So that's a 13-foot. On the high side. The lower side would be a little less, but on this side, it would be approximately 13 feet. That's pulling, pulling in.
Okay, go on with.
And the other thing, also what now, okay, there's a couple of other things going on here. One, we're trying to avoid undermining not only the hillside, but the neighboring trees, which was an issue with the neighbor. If I was to do that, I'd have to come back, I'd bring the set back over, come over, and I have to bring that over so I'm not degrading the hillside enough for these trees, which also brings me farther this way and whether or not I have enough room. Now the hill gets steeper as I move over. On this side, it gets steep very quickly, so it could be even higher. The, the way, the way this is, the way that topo is going right now, it, it drops off very quickly here. So the wall from about here to here is fairly short. Four and a half to maybe five and a half feet. And then over in this corner, it gets higher.
Now, if you had to put a diagonal, then how much deeper are you to dig into? You know, three cars instead of.
Three cars going this way?
Parallel to the street is more like a.
Well, you're still, if you look, if you look at how, if you look at how the topo is running, going diagonally, it's, it's pretty much going to be the same because the topo is running up in that direction diagonally. I might, I might save a little bit of coming in on an angle.
Because the thing is, you're going to, you already, how much width you have for the parking space right now?
How much?
Between the white line on the, on the road and.
From here? Oh, this is eight feet. So these, these are eight-feet markers.
Okay.
So in order to go in, a minimum, the smallest space I can do is 16. And one of them, it would need, well, unless we get another use permit, there would need to be 18. Eight, so I'm going now, I'm going from eight feet, so I'm going another 10 feet in. Even if I put them diagonally, I'm still going.
So what's, what's the length of the car itself?
It's the space that's required. There's a space requirement. And there, the requirements for a full-size car are nine by 18 and requirements for compact are eight by 16. So the minimum depth I have to go in is, is at least another eight feet from this wall.
Yeah.
And we're still, and if you go in another eight feet, you're here, which is about 62, 61, 62. So at least another 12, 13 feet high wall.
Just through the chair, I want to note, this is a located on a corner at a four-way, more or less a four-way intersection where Sierra Point Road and San Benito Road intersect. I would, you know, guess that the city engineer might have some concerns about sight distance impacts of cars pulling, you know, head in and then backing out at this particular location. So I would posit that the benefit from at least a safety standpoint of people using these on-street spaces is that there is more ability to exit and enter safely at this sensitive corner.
Yeah, I agree with you there. I think the, if, if there is a blind corner like that, it's going to be a problem and real safety concern, no problem with that. So.
So that one is, right, okay. So even on a diagonal, we're looking at at least a 12, 13-foot wall.
Do you have any more questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Did you have any more things you wanted to explain or present?
We would love to leave the wall where it is.
Yeah, I can see that.
But, you know, we were also trying to help, we're trying to provide some parking for, for a situation. And, you know, given that space, I've seen two cars on there. They're both hanging over the white line in the traffic. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Dilworth?
Hi, Mr. Chairman for the day. Dana Dilworth, and I generally try not to get involved with issues in central Brisbane, but this seems precedent-setting to me because there are so many non-conformances here. And when I look at where the, these two properties come together with the neighbors and hear the city say that you're not going to revisit the issue unless they go over 2,700 square feet, which means there's still some build-outs that can occur up there with multiple non-conformances. And I'm not certain that's how our, you know, housing and parking, you know, approvals should go. I have lived in, in Brisbane and remodeled two houses. So I'm really concerned about the outbuildings and whether they would meet current code. And in my experience, and these are the cottages that would be considered to have been built in the 20s and 30s and 40s, we kind of jokingly called it the Budweiser Construction Crew because you open up the walls and you find literally Budweiser bottles and, and total still knob and tube. We've pulled out horsehair insulation and things like that. So I'm really concerned about grandfathering something in that was never intended for housing and know a lot of people who have mold issues because of those kinds of choices. And I think in, in terms of saying that it's precedent-setting, that it clears away the way for all the other people who have total non-conformances going, okay, Jerry got away with it. I think we need to look at how the sewer comes down the hillside. One of those experiences. One of those experiences, you realize that the clay pipes that were built for the homes in the 60s and 70s, or whenever, can't withstand the movement that's happening on the hillside here. And I'm concerned about foundations, where I've seen where we, we go in and are, found that our kitchen used to be a porch, and that all the piers dangled. And we found that it's because there's a spring in this area, that during the, when the hillside is full of water, it heaves, and when it's absent water, it settles down. And so that has made a difference in understanding the geology of the hillside, and concerned about these older buildings just being grandfathered in without, and specifically, when we remodeled, we worked with gas. And my plumber said, "We don't need to have it tested, I did it right, I know we did it right." And lo and behold, we found a gas leak in the walls that had probably been there for years and years and years. So that's why I'm concerned about, you know, even the houses that we think are livable may not, that don't meet code, are of issue in terms of grandfathering them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Hard from George Penya for both 179 San Benito and 500 Sierra Point Road. If you'd like to come forward and make comments on 500 Sierra Point Road at this time.
I don't have anything for 179, you can scratch that other one off, please.
Very good.
My wife and I, we've lived at 478 Sierra Point Road for roughly 15 years. When we first moved to the house, the house that in question, 500 Sierra Point Road, was owned by Cliff Lentz. And we never had a problem with parking. Over the years, after he sold the house, it's become a huge issue, which means that sometimes if we go out late in the evening, there's no parking in front of our house. The other thing that's happened also, when the city started striping the street, which was a number of years ago, to make sure that cars were not in the right-of-way of fire engines or whatever, I had a little, I have a little grass area that I covered over with, with blocks, so that I could get my car in there. Well, the, the area's actually too small for a spot, but it's large enough for me to block my driveway. What's happened now is people that are living, I'm assuming at 500 Sierra Point Road, are starting to park there, and they block my exit from my driveway. And I've asked a number of them to move over a period of years, and it's, it's really become a huge problem, not parking. So, I'm, I'm totally against legalizing this, because three spots for two dwellings, I don't think is gonna be sufficient. All you have, all you have to get is just a couple in there in that back unit, that have each a car, maybe, maybe a third car, and, and then, there's, there's no parking for anybody. And I know it's a concern for other people around the neighborhood, too, because they can't find parking. And these are people that have been living here possibly longer than I have. So my, my biggest concern is the parking. Thank you.
Sean Sweeney?
Good evening, Commissioners. You have a letter on file that I, it's in your packet?
I don't have it, I have to read it.
One of the primary points on this area of construction is there is a, this rock face that you're talking about, and it's a bone of the mountain that is actually exposed, and it's quite dramatic. It's a solid rock, there's no doubt about it, because when I live at 516, I don't currently live there now, I own the property, but at 516 Sierra Point, when we were working on some work in the, in the basement, when we were digging next to the bicentennial walkway, no problem whatsoever. The further we got toward 500 Sierra Point, we started running into this rock, and it's bluestone.
It's bluestone?
It's bluestone, it's hand-chisel work. It was miserable, just getting the rock out of our way. And this rock is, is a, is visible to the entire community, it's pretty, and if this parking place were to be allowed to go in, you'd be creating a wall that would reflect lights from cars coming down Sierra Point, traveling southbound. You'd destroy the appearance of that entire rock structure, and I don't know what would happen to the stability of the adjacent rock structures on my property, nor the root systems of two mature Monterey pine trees onsite, and a eucalyptus phycotholia. So it's, you're being asked to legalize an illegal situation by creating parking on city property that is not guaranteed for that home. Anybody in that neighborhood can park a car there, because currently, I moved into the neighborhood in 1975, directly across from 516 Sierra Point and 500 Sierra Point, two lots, side by side, owned by the same property owner, Mary, who's since passed away, she had no car. There was tons of parking in the parking, in the neighborhood. There is not now. There are two cars parked at all times in front of 500 Sierra Point. So there are two cars parking there now. Creating these two parking spaces on the city's right-of-way is not gonna solve any parking issues in the neighborhood whatsoever, because they're being used now. What will, what could possibly happen is people in the neighborhood realizing that those are city parking places, they'll inhabit them, and people living at 500 Sierra Point are gonna be in worse situation than they are now. But that rock face is, it's one of the few situations where the bones of the mountain are on the surface and people can see them. In most areas of town, the rock face is underneath soil, but in that situation, it's right there on the surface, and it's extensive, and it's not easy to get out.
Thank you. Andrew Tong?
Good evening, sorry about the speaking out of turn, this is my first public hearing. I had a question about the accessory structure.
Yes.
If we can, can we scroll maybe back to that page on the, on the, on the map, the, there, oh yeah, keep going, sorry. So my question has to do with whether that accessory structure in the back, as you can see that it's, it's right on the property line between 500 Sierra Point Road and next-door 44 Sierra Point Road. If, if they're going to be converting it into a dwelling unit, is that, is that structure going to be possibly resized or relocated?
Could staff clarify? The staff report said that no additional review would be necessary as long as the, what was the limitation on the secondary?
Well, so it's an existing structure with an existing encroachment. Because it's already considered habitable space, based on how it's been improved over the years with permits, there's no additional regulatory requirements to legalize those encroachments that exist already for the secondary dwelling unit use.
But I think the question is, if it became a secondary dwelling unit, would the owner be at liberty to expand the size of the property?
Oh, I see.
Not necessarily the encroachments?
Sure. So there is a cap for secondary dwelling units of 1,000 square feet of floor area. As with any property in the R1 district, there are maximum lot coverage requirements of 40%, and maximum floor area requirements as well of 72% of the lot size. So, you know, ostensibly, if they did want to ever expand this unit within the allowable limits, which would be up to 900 square feet, I believe, without triggering an additional parking space, that may be able to move forward, we would have to review the project for its conformance with all the zoning requirements.
Okay, and so if, if they decided, or let me ask, are there plans to, are there plans to increase the size of that, or is it just to leave it the way it is?
The applicant has not proposed any changes to the actual size or footprint of the structure, but Director Swicki just reminded me, if, in addition to all the other zoning requirements that would come into play, if they wanted to expand the structure in the future, they would also need to legalize those encroachments.
Okay.
So, and the setbacks would, the new floor area would have to comply with all the existing setback requirements.
Okay, so what you're saying is that if they wanted to increase it by a single square foot, they would have to be in compliance with the, with the rules to move it?
Yeah, the addition would need to comply with the setback requirements.
Even by a single square foot?
Depending on where the addition is located.
Okay.
It would need to comply.
But only the addition would need to comply?
Okay, but if we just leave it alone and we don't touch it, maybe add some plumbing or something that won't change the size, it can, it can remain where it is. Okay. So that, that's, that was my main concern, was that, because I am the owner and resident of the next-door property at 44 Sierra Point Road, and I am doing things in my, in my backyard recently, and it, it is somewhat of an inconvenience to have a structure like right on the property line, especially if you want to put in a fence or trees or something. So, that's, that's my... Yeah, understood. So, so that, that's my, that was my main concern on that. And then, on the parking situation, I think as long as I, I am right next door, as long as the, the situation doesn't influence the parking situation on my side in any negative way, then I'm, I'm more or less ambivalent or neutral on, on the parking in the, in the front. My main concern is on the structure in the back, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joel Diaz?
Good evening, Honorable Plan Commissioners, Joel Diaz. So, I really like this proposal. I think that the cars that park there now kind of hang out into the street, and it's kind of a hazard. I think it's gonna clean it up a lot. The, but uniquely about this property is the fact that they're gonna legalize a unit, and because of the current housing shortage and crisis, I think we, we probably should make an, an extra effort to, to create these units when, when possible. I think that's smart planning. I think, you know, maybe we are giving up, you know, potentially one spot, but I think for the greater good, it makes a lot of sense. I think there's recently some legislation that was passed, SB 1069, which is going to make it easier to create these second units. And it's going to give local cities the right to not require any parking. And the prediction is, is that this has the potential to create hundreds of thousands of housing units for California, which is gonna greatly help the housing crisis. And I think it's a smart way to go, I think it's something that we could start with here in Brisbane and start doing, and trying to create some of these second units, you know, and then maybe we won't have to have, like the Baylands-type developments, and have all this talk about not having enough housing. I think this is a perfect example for us to start on that. You know, I am aware of having private parking facilities in the past, I've actually experienced those. The code is 12.05.01. I know it's still in the code book, and I don't know if it still applies anymore, but through an encroachment permit, you can, you can have a private parking facility. I've actually built a couple of them myself, and I, and that was in the past. I think the most recent one was 2011, I think. So I don't know if it's changed or not, but we, we did used to do that in the past.
Excuse me, it was 12.5, I mean...
12.05.01. And that would be through an encroachment permit, you'd have to get the approval of the city engineer to, to do that. And I don't know if that's still a current, currently allowed or not, a planning would probably know better, but we did do that in the past, maybe that could still be done again, I'm not sure. As far as the wall...
Could you explain what you're, say that again, what...
It's an encroachment permit. So it's the same concept as if you had your driveway going to your house, right? People can't park in your driveway, right? And yet it's in the public right-of-way. And so there is still some restricted use, even though it's public property. And this happens all over town. So there, this, the current, the code that I talked about was, was created by the city council to encourage people to build parking in these difficult situations, just like this one, where the hillside is too steep. And it actually talks about that in the code. And that's why it was created, to create private parking facilities in the public right-of-way, to reduce the hardship on, on these people. It does seem like, you know, you could decorate the wall, you know, in a lot of different ways to make it more attractive. Also seems like you could make it lower, you know? Again, that's an engineering question. Most engineers make you take it all the way to the top, right? But then, you could cheat it down a little bit, you know? Maybe a few little rocks will slip over here and there, and what, what have you. But aesthetically, it'll look more like the way Ms. Parker was suggesting it should look, and, and I think that's probably a good idea. It is a beautiful rock face, and I think the way you accomplish that is to lower the wall, and then decorate it in a way that makes it kind of match the hillside. But again, just, just to legalize a unit alone, I think it's worth it, so I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like applicant Jericho?
Yeah, just like to address a couple of...
Yeah, please.
As far as the structure itself, it was upgraded fairly recently, when the addition was put on. Also, part of the requirement in here is for the building official to review the building and bring everything up to code. The neighboring property, so, part of your concern, that window facing your property will be eliminated, because that will now need to be a one-hour firewall. So there, that, that part will be addressed. So the structure itself will be brought totally up to code, so it's not, that part probably won't be an issue.
Except the setback, if there, you want...
The setback's the setback.
You won't be able to increase the setback to bring in compliance, right?
No, no, but what I'm saying is, what, what the city, the building official will require, because it is within the setback, is for the, the property where it's close to the property line will need to be a one-hour firewall, which will take that window out that currently looks over the neighbor's yard.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the commission on the subject? A motion to close public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Did you want to start first?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so, I would like to find out, it, I would, I'm, I'm inclined to approve the project, but I would like to ask that the structural engineer take into effect what kind of stone this is, and if it's hard enough stone so that we could get away with not putting in a retaining wall, or at least put in the smallest retaining wall possible. I think that it's, I, I like the fact that we won't have too much, as little as possible encroachment into, as one of our neighbors said, the bones of the hill. And I think bluestone is, well, my years of geology study were very long ago, but I can't say I'm an expert, but I would like as much as possible to not put in a retaining wall, to put in a retaining wall if we don't have to. That's what I have to say.
This particular project has a lot of benefits and also a lot of concerns. Now, we have to weigh the benefits versus the concerns. we have to weigh the benefits versus the concerns here, the concerns are, and my main concern is this project doesn't have the dedicated parking, and there's no possible way they can do that, and the encroachment idea that Joel was talking about, is it possible now, or not?
There is the provision in the code, and again, I couldn't tell you the last time the city engineer has actually granted, it may be the cases Joel's talked about, it's certainly not something that's happened in the recent past, and I think Julia's had some conversation that she can relay, but the city engineer about this issue.
Yeah, so, I know that the applicant, prior to even submitting this application, had meetings with the city engineer to determine, within the bounds of feasibility for the property owner and the expectations of the city, what the amenable solution would be, I, the city engineer did not indicate to me that a structure would not be ideal here, neither did he request it, so perhaps the, while we've closed-
Are we not talking about a structure, we're talking about uncovered dedicated parking, so what it can be is like, there can be some kind of a marking, saying this is the parking exclusively for that particular house.
Oh, I see, yes, there is a provision for that in the code.
So if that's done, then I, then I think I will, I will be, I'll feel a lot more comfortable going with this project.
Are you waiting for a staff?
Waiting for them.
Okay, sorry about that, so, it would be under the purview of the city engineer whether or not to grant that, so it could be something you recommend, if you choose to approve the application, as a condition that you recommend the city engineer consider granting an encroachment license for private enjoyment of that space.
The other, the only other sort of term that we've seen for other kind of encroachment permits is they're revocable, at the discretion of the city, so, you know, it's never going to have the same, even if he does grant it, it's not going to be irrevocable, but anyway, that's certainly, that's your direction and your preference, certainly put it in the recommendation that it's your preference, and we'll relay that.
Reason I'm saying that is I don't want to set a precedence that you can have a house with no, no parking at all, you can build without any parking, so if, if that condition can be put in here, and I'll be more than happy to talk to the, you know, city engineer too, to help this project, if it's possible to, to get this done, that was one of my concerns, and the second concern I had was regarding the retaining wall, and I think I like the idea that Commissioner Parker brought that up, I don't know the, the, the type of the rock, that, what kind of strength value that one has, that has to be determined, and whatever we do there, I think I'd like to see something that's, that's appealing to the eye, not just the bare concrete wall, and we don't have that, that information in front of us. Caltrain has tried so many different treatments on the freeways, if you see, if you go on towards Half Moon Bay, you will see a lot of those cuts where they try to mimic the, you know, the rock formation looks like that, so something like that will be possible too, but I think if you can preserve the blue rock formation somehow, that will be a really good idea, possibly, and as far as the, the setback for the back unit, I think we should put in the condition that any time they want to change any of that portion of that, then they must comply with the setback requirements, because right now they're not going to do anything, but what I'm looking at is, if they're going to comply with the California Building Code, it may be necessary to move some portion of that, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not designing it, but if they do that, then there is, we should make sure that there is a minimum setback there, otherwise, if they're not going to do anything, it's already been there, I have no problem, this will be a precedent-setting, you know, decision, because it's going to come back again for a lot of other new, other projects that are similar, so whatever we're doing here, it probably will set the precedence for the new project, which I don't have any problem with.
I just always hesitate the, the use of the term precedential when you come to use permits, because there are basically site-specific facts, and every case has to be treated, you know, based on the unique circumstances, so, again, I understand the concern, but, you know, there, every case is going to have to be, and go through this kind of rigorous case-by-case sort of analysis, understanding the facts, and determine if the findings will fit the facts of a particular case.
Yeah, but in this particular case, we are giving three different exceptions, you know, parking as well as setback, and, so there are a lot of exceptions here, and that may come back again in, in future with other applications too, that you gave the exceptions for no parking here, no, no dedicated parking, how come I don't, I can get it, so those kind of questions will come before us, but again, if you, if you can put that condition in, then I probably will have, and also the preserving the retaining wall.
So you owe an advisory condition to the city engineer to-
Yeah.
-eliminate or minimize retaining walls to the maximum extent-
Right.
-safe and feasible, and any retaining walls to mimic the, a naturalistic appearance to mimic the existing rock face, is that sort of the gist of what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, well, my opinion is that while I greatly appreciate the efforts the applicant has gone through to solve some very difficult engineering problems, I feel that this property in no way supports the proposed use case, and I do not feel that the planning commission should approve this development, I think the applicant should either return with a minimum of three parking, I believe, I agree with the comments that really four parking spaces for two dwelling units is more appropriate, but current code is three, so if we were going to approve through the city council, I mean, through the planning commission, it's my opinion that the applicant should come back with three spaces, failing that, if we wanted to take the advice of Mr. Diaz, I really feel that that is a decision for the city council, because it really is going to impact parking citywide, and we have to decide as a city if we want to adopt that sort of strategy, so my recommendation would be to deny the application and ask them to appeal.
My, my recommendation was to, for the applicant to come back, you know, with the, with the necessary idea as to how they're going to do the dedicated parking space, as well as the, the design of the retaining wall, I like to see that, and by that time, maybe they can explore a little bit more in terms of providing additional parking.
I would also support the applicant coming back with three spaces.
Pardon me?
I would also, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead. I, I said it doesn't have to be three spaces right there, but in some cases, I've seen in the past, that we have provided a provision that they can have, they can provide additional parking away from the parking, you know, away from the house, and I think the case in point is the one house in Kings, Kings Road, where they didn't have the space to put the, the on-street, on-street parking, so what they did is they bought a portion of the, you know, lot from the house across from there, and they provided the parking there to meet this city requirement.
Yeah, I would, of course, in theory, be in favor of such an arrangement, but I'm not aware of any place in this vicinity where that could happen, but if that could happen-
No, I can give you the address of that address.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about your case example, I'm saying that when, when that's feasible, I, I think it's a good solution, but I, I don't know that it's feasible here.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be at the right place, it can be in the vicinity of there. So my, my suggestion is that let's, let's, let the applicant come back again with a little bit more homework, in terms of what he, what can be done, and-
So then you're suggesting we don't vote and don't make a decision tonight?
Right.
And re-discuss it on another occasion?
Come back with the more, more data on that, see what can be done.
And what do you think, Commissioner Parker?
I'm waiting, I-
Oh, I'm just trying to get clarification, so continuance would be to allow the applicant to explore the, with the city engineer, the ability to somehow designate these spaces within the right-of-way for private purpose, that would be the point, and it's not, I remember, on the other hand, the idea that there should be three spaces and not two, is that into the continuance, or?
That, that should be explored also at the same time, so, you know, they can come back with this idea that there's no possible way, because right now, we don't know whether you need ten feet high wall for three parking space, or you need less, you know?
Okay, so those are the, those are the issues you want to have reserved, yes. Okay, you might want to call for the question in terms of a formal-
Okay, would someone like to-
So we are-
Motion continuance to another meeting?
So we're making a motion for five hundred Sierra Point Road, use permit UP six one six, a continuance for the applicant to come back again.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
To the chair, we're going to continue to a date specific?
Oh, okay.
We would continue to the next regular scheduled meeting, October twenty-
In two weeks.
November seventh.
Would that be enough time to-
What's going to be my-
Is it enough time?
I think that's going to be-
How much time does the applicant need?
I think we should ask the applicant how much time they would need.
Sure, please.
In order to address your concerns, we have to bring in a soils engineer and a structural engineer to look at the, look at the stone itself, and to engineer whatever we're going to present, that's going to be based on whatever their schedules are, and when they can get out and actually do that.
Yeah.
I mean, even a month would be tight.
Yeah.
Why don't we leave it when-
Open.
Open whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
We can continue off calendar, we'll need to re-notice it, and, so that's up to your discretion.
Or would you like to pick a date, maybe six weeks, and reschedule if you can't make the date?
Structural engineers are very difficult to pin down right now.
Yeah, if, if it's okay to leave it open-ended, and you just notify us, that would be great, because then I can give them a better timeline, once I, and I'll stay in touch with, with the planning, let them know what the timeline is, once I talk to my engineers, they'll let me know what we can do.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay?
That's okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So do we do that all again? Someone motioned that we?
Yeah.
Oh, do we need to motion again?
No.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda, public hearing of one seventy-nine San Benito Road, use permit UP seven sixteen, use permit to modify the parking regulations to allow two compact-sized off-street parking spaces within the existing driveway, and one standard-sized on-street parking space adjacent to the front property line, where two covered off-street parking spaces and two on- or off-street parking spaces are required. This modification would allow for the legalization of the conversion of an attached one-car garage into living area. Steve Miller applicant, Steve and Bernardo Miller owner, APN zero zero seven three eight one 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 zero, we have a staff report.
So the applicant is requesting a use permit to modify the parking regulations for a single-family home located at one seventy-nine Benito Road. The property is currently developed with a single-family home of approximately twenty-one hundred square feet, it's currently two bedrooms, the proposal is to add a new master bedroom suite within the existing footprint of the main floor level. The code requires two covered parking spaces on-site, and two uncovered parking spaces, which can be on or off-street for a home of this size, and as noted in the request description, prior to the current property owner obtaining, or purchasing the property, it became apparent that the existing one-car garage, which is shown with the exterior door here, had been converted to a living area without the benefit of building permits. So again, a comparison of what's on the site compared to what is existing, which I already went over, and here's some photos of the site itself, so, again, the exterior door, the garage door was not removed, however, the interior was finished, and this shows again the driveway, which is about twenty feet by twenty-eight, a part of which encroaches into the San Benito Road right-of-way, and then this is a slightly uphill view of the on-street parking space that exists at the, adjacent to the front lot line, and another view of the driveway. So the site itself, it's about five thousand square feet, the existing home maintains a non-conforming setback in regards to the front property line of about six feet, but as you can see, the driveway is of adequate size to accommodate two compact spaces uncovered, and then one standard parking space would be accommodated adjacent to the front lot line in the public right-of-way. And the floor plan of the upper level, so you can see the area annotated by staff of the area formerly used as a one-car garage, which was converted into living space, also shows the proposed master bedroom suite, bath and bedroom suite, using existing living area, and then the lower floor plan, which no changes are proposed by the applicant. So again, in order to approve the requested use permit, the planning commission has to make several findings, first being general plan conformance, so this is a single-family property, it remains a single-family property, and compatibility with adjacent uses and structures, again, there's no change to the actual footprint or use of the home, and then in regards to the health, safety, and general welfare, there would, there are no anticipated impacts based on the limited scope of work, which the applicant, again, would be converting a portion of the main living area to a new master bedroom suite. And then specific to the parking use permit itself, the commission must find that strict enforcement would not be required, so the proposed on-site parking spaces, or the existing on-site parking spaces in the driveway are uncovered, there's minimal enforcement required on the city's part to make sure those spaces aren't converted into living area, or otherwise made inaccessible to vehicles, and again, any expansion of the home would trigger a review to ensure compliance with parking requirements. The second finding is that the proposal would not create or intensify a shortage of on-street parking, given the availability of existing or improved off-street parking, which may not fully meet the requirements, so again, there is no intensification of the use, this will remain a single-family home, and then just a note, there, there's a thirty-foot curb available for on-street parking, so this is significantly shy of the minimum forty-foot we require by code, but again, there is adequate room for two compact cars to park comfortably. The last finding is that full compliance with the parking requirements is not reasonably feasible due to existing structural or site constraints, while it would be technically feasible to convert the interior area back into a one-car garage, the resulting parking arrangement would still be non-conforming, as we can, we require two covered spaces, not one. A carport could potentially be built within the existing driveway, there is enough coverage left, lot coverage allotment left to do that, however, due to the minimum five-foot setback requirement for any posts, a carport would only allow one legal covered parking space, so it would actually provide one covered space, but eliminate a, another space, due to the location of the posts, so that would exacerbate the existing non-conformity and impact to street parking. So in conclusion, we are recommending approval by adoption of the draft- So in conclusion, we are recommending approval by adoption of the draft resolution before you, subject to the findings and conditions contained therein. And I will take questions.
Yes, for a 2,100-square-foot dwelling unit, is the parking requirements exactly the same for two and three-bedroom?
Yes. Once you're over 1,800 square feet and you're on a lot of more than 37 half-feet of width or frontage, yes, it's four total required spaces.
And there's only three here at the moment?
Mm-hmm.
Would anyone like to address the commission? I don't have any cards. Applicant here? No?
Should we close?
Oh, I guess we should open.
We need to open.
Yes. Can I have a motion?
Just a point of order. You don't need to open the public hearing. It's advertised as a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, great. Would the applicant like to address the commission then?
Thank you. I'm Steve Miller. First of all, the report from the planning department is actually very good and very detailed and should answer most of your questions. The only thing I would add is that we actually looked at several different options for this to try and improve the situation and whatnot. And after spending several months on this, this is the best solution that we can come up with. Because even if we re-convert the garage back to a garage, the tandem parking rule would only allow one car in the driveway. So we can only come up with three parking spaces regardless.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No. I don't.
No.
All right. Thank you. So a question for staff. What are the benefits of approving this as a legal unit as opposed to?
You want to close the public hearings?
I thought we didn't have to open or close the public hearings. Or do we close? We have to, okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Are there any? We need to find out if anyone else wants to.
Does anyone else want to speak to the commission now? No. Okay. Still no.
I think we just have a hand.
Oh, yes. Would that strange woman, I mean, would Miss Evil, please?
That's off the record, right?
Now, I was just curious. I don't know what the tandem parking rule is. I just don't know what that is.
Yeah. So actually, and apologies to Mr. Miller, that's, so the requirement that we have in the zoning code allows for a maximum of two spaces to be in tandem. So what he was referring to was, and let me go back to, okay. What he was referring to is, he was assuming that you could not have a space blocking the garage door. And that's not correct. We would allow, again, if there was a parking space within the former garage, we would allow one space to be located in the, I should use this, sorry. Okay. So in our imaginary previous garage here, we would have a car. And then you could have a car in tandem here. This car, well, let's see, if the backing out would actually, perhaps.
Because the garage is in the middle of the two spaces?
Because it is in the middle.
Yeah, in the middle of the two spaces.
That's right. So, okay. Sorry. Apologies again. Mr. Miller was correct. Because of the backward motion, when you're exiting, the two spaces would potentially be blocked. So.
Okay.
He was correct.
Okay. So if we approve this, we're not getting any additional parking? And if we deny it, we're not getting any additional parking? So is there a benefit to approving?
Whether you consider it a benefit or not, I guess you're getting one covered versus one uncovered, right? And whether or not, certain commissioners historically don't consider covered necessarily beneficial because garages can get cluttered. So I mean, it really depends on, that really may be the question in front of you at this point.
Yeah. No, I wasn't meaning to open the question of whether there was a benefit to forcing the garage to be converted. I don't really want to address that concern. I'm just wondering if, is there a benefit to approving the application as opposed to denying without?
Close the public hearing at this point?
Oh. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, since we never did that formally?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, again, the question being, what's the benefit, you mean, the benefit to the proponent or to the?
Well, to the city or to the community or?
Well, again, I think either way, you're going to have two on-site spaces. So the question of whether you find one covered and one uncovered on-site space superior to two uncovered spaces. That's really, that's the trade-off here.
Well, I mean, there's a third option. You know, if the applicant had never come forward, the city would not make him.
Well, I guess we can't really rewind the tape here. We're all here and we're all in this room this evening, so we're.
So if we denied it, then we would be obligated to force the garage reconversion?
Yes.
And the garage reconversion would probably result in it being used as a?
Well, possibly.
Yeah.
We'll say what?
Be used as a storage area. Because it doesn't look like it's actually going to be a fun place to park.
Right.
The covered parking issue was very long, very widely discussed when we did the parking regulations. And it's still a concern. That's why we did the covered parking space. And majority of the people, if you can see the notes at those hearings, majority of the people don't use parking, garage as a parking anywhere. Most of the people park in the driveway. So in this particular case, we do have the requirement. And I suggest that we should go back to the parking regulations someday and try to clarify that. Because this one here is going to come back to us all the time, you know? And as far as the requirements for the parking, this particular project does meet that, you know, in terms of providing two uncovered parking. At least they have parking for their own use, not like the other project where they had no dedicated parking. And they're also providing an on-street parking too, off-street parking. So from that perspective, I think this project has a lot better chances of, you know, possible to get this approved. And I think I like the, I have a problem with the cover, but that problem, when we were doing the parking regulations, at that time, I raised the same question. So, but to me, this proposal is acceptable.
I'm ready to approve the project.
I don't really like approving the project, but I don't think that there's any public benefit to denying it at this point under the circumstances.
So why don't I make a motion to approve the 179 San Benito Use Permit UP-716?
And I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is Tunnel Road.
Item three on the agenda is a public hearing on 575 Tunnel Avenue, interim use permit UP 516, and interim use permit to allow the continuation of a bus storage yard and dispatch facility for approximately 125 para-transit shuttle buses and parking for approximately 25 on-site employees, with hours of operations being 24 hours a day, seven days per week, for a maximum of five years. Lenz Corpus, Universal Paragon Corporation, applicant, Tontex USA Incorporated, Incorporated owner, APN 005152240 and 005152250 and 005152260.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thanks. The applicant is proposing to continue the use of an existing bus yard facility at the Baylands for vehicle storage and a dispatch office for up to 125 para-transit shuttle vehicles. The fleet consists primarily of minibus and they provide transportation to elderly and disabled persons in San Francisco under a contract with San Francisco MTA. The minibus that are currently in use are 22 feet long, TransDev services. The operator has indicated that they anticipate that they will be changing over their fleet of minibus to include smaller vehicles, or more smaller vehicles, I understand they do have some already, such as minivans and sedans. That change in vehicles would occur over time, possibly in the next few years. This application would be to accommodate the existing fleet as well as the change to smaller vehicles. Previously, in 2010 and again in 2011, interim use permits were granted for use of this site for its current use as a bus yard. The site development was completed in 2013. And note that the original use permit was for 50, 45-foot-long buses plus car parking. The later use permit in 2011 expanded the originally approved hours to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Given the use of smaller vehicles than originally planned, the applicant has proposed to restripe the parking lot, the lot for more efficient site layout. Also, in anticipation of another separate application for use of the area to the rear of this site, the applicant has proposed separation of a drive aisle along the south edge of the site to accommodate that future potential tenant. The other tenancy would be subject to a separate interim use permit, so that matters not before you. It's just essentially on-site changes.
Or clarification, is that the green and brown area just to the right of the circle?
It is. I'll use the pointer here. So that's the current, and what's proposed is the future, ongoing bus yard. And that, there's a fence essentially that lines the back of it here. So this area out here is, what I understand, is being proposed for a separate use. So that would come to you at another time. So there's, the approval of this permit tonight would not obligate the commission to approving that future use in the back. It just simply allows for that potential. So it's essentially an option that the applicant could potentially take advantage of if the commission, in fact, approves this. With the restriping, the total on-site spaces would be 117 to accommodate their minibus and other fleet vehicles, plus another 43 standard-sized spaces for 160 on-site spaces total. That would exceed their estimated maximum parking demand by at least 10 spaces. Also, and that would be assuming essentially they have all their vehicles in the lot, which I understand they've probably, except the wee hours of the night, they may have at least some out in the field. The applicant could address that a little better. Also, an additional 19 on-street parking spaces are located along the site frontage, but these need not be considered towards meeting the minimum requirements for the use. The operator has indicated that most of their drivers use public transportation to report for service and depart at the end of their shifts. Based on their peak fleet size plus employee vehicles, they have estimated a total average daily trip count of 236. Again, the shuttle bus yard would continue the 24-hour-a-day operation. The term of the permit would be for five years. As discussed in the agenda report, the use meets all of the required findings for the commission to grant the interim use permit. Several conditions of approval have been included in the draft resolution. Included are conditions recommended by the city engineer to address roadway operations and maintenance. That includes a payment to allow for street repairs and improvements along Tunnel Avenue due to the traffic imposed by the use. Also, a condition of approval is included regarding abandonment of the use if it were to interfere or obstruct with other planned public improvements. In closing, staff recommends conditional approval of use permit UP 516, the adoption of the resolution containing the findings and conditions of approval. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
This is the fourth or fifth time I heard this. In my tenure, I probably come back again in five years. The only question I had was the traffic analysis, because they're going to use the smaller vehicles. That means they're going to do more trips back and forth. So whether that will impact the, in terms of the level of service on 101.
The trip count is not significantly higher. They base their estimated trip count on what their maximum was. I understand the use of the smaller vehicles is to better accommodate what their actual demand is and to not have large vehicles going out to pick up one or two people on a run. And they do various trips through San Francisco. The applicant, I imagine, can address that in more detail. But also, there is a condition of approval that the city engineer has recommended that should anything noticeable be raised as a concern in terms of traffic, that the city may impose a traffic study and actual mitigations if that becomes an issue at all.
Yeah, the reason I ask is this is in tandem with what's going on at a sledge factory. And this one here, if you're going to have smaller vehicles, you know, it makes sense to have more trips because it's a lot easier to get in and get out. So that's why I was trying to see if there is a traffic study required or not. But the condition is there, so I'm satisfied with that. No problem.
Any more questions?
No.
Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Open the public hearing.
You said we don't have to open the public hearing.
We don't.
So confused by the rules.
We kept changing the rules.
Go ahead and talk.
Are we keep changing the rules? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners, staff. There is one item that I would like to correct in the staff report on page G 3.4. It makes a statement that.
3.4?
G 3.4.
Okay.
And it makes the statement that the site operates under an industrial stormwater permit through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The site was developed under the guidance of a general construction permit, which required a bio-swell. And we complied, but that has, once the construction was complete, that permit was lifted and there was a notice of termination issued. So that's just one slight little correction I'd like to note.
Does staff has any problem with that?
No, this was language that was carried forward from the previous permit. And it is correct that they have a stormwater swell to manage stormwater from the site that runs along the front of the site. So.
Okay. No problem.
Any more questions?
Nope.
No.
I asked all my questions in the past.
The last 10 times?
Would you like to come? Yes, please.
Commissioners and staff, just, I'm Mary McLean. I'm the general manager for TransDev that operates from the site. And I thought you had a very valid question that I could answer for you. What we define as trips are these revenue vehicles leaving this site and going into San Francisco. So once it leaves and goes into San Francisco, we keep that vehicle there for the shift of the driver. So adding smaller vehicles will not increase the traffic from this facility at all.
Perfect. Thank you for clarification.
That's all I have. That's all I have. Motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I approve the project.
So, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
No.
Well, I feel there's no objection, so could I have a motion to approve the...
Interim use permit.
Yes, the interim use permit UP-516.
I make a motion to approve the interim use permit UP-516.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Wait for you in another five years. If I'm still alive.
Items initiated by the commission, do you have anything?
By the staff?
By the staff.
I think that's what dropped out of his way.
Okay. On the internet, it says commission first. Items initiated by staff, I guess that's normally the order we do it in, right?
I'm sorry, I took away your...
Maybe there's only one thing, just relates to part of the discussion that came up on the first business item about the parking use permit. There has been a change in state law regarding secondary dwelling units and the city's ability to regulate those, and we're looking into that in terms of what modifications we need to make.
Is that the SB 1069?
Yes.
And that's gonna take effect, or it has taken effect?
Takes effect in January. So, we'll be looking into that, and I think one of the primary implications on certain types of SDUs, it will change the parking requirements. And we're in a position where we'll have to, typically the state regulations, we have to be consistent with that, we can't be more, we can't require more parking than the state regulations, we need to bring our...
Absolutely, but I think that should come down from the city, and you might also wanna
So, perhaps at that point, we should bring them back?
I think you can make it more stringent.
No, this will be a future, we're gonna amend the ordinance, and so this will be a separate process, you'll be getting another ordinance amendment to analyze, this is more informational for you, it doesn't have any direct bearing on an application that's pending before us today.
But it would take effect in January?
Yes.
So, we'll know before January?
So, in this particular instance, we cannot be more stricter than the state?
Correct. We can't require more either regulations or parking than that state.
Because in the other areas, we can.
Sometimes you can, yes, sometimes it's sort of case by case, sometimes, depending on what the purpose of these regulations are, and yes. I always wanted to kind of put that up, and it won't affect every SDU, there are certain classes, and we'll go through all that with you.
Thanks.
All right. Items initiated by the commission?
Items initiated by the commission, I have a question regarding the San Francisco move to annex the Baylands. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think you... I don't know if you, just to give a real quick update, this matter was put in the form of a resolution before the San Francisco Board of Supervisors maybe two weeks ago, and the mayor and city manager were there representing Brisbane, basically opposing this sort of threat, this action. The Board of Supervisors referred it to a land use subcommittee or committee they have, and so we'll receive notice when that committee meeting is scheduled, and I suspect the city manager and/or mayor will be in attendance to press the city's, you know, request that that part of that resolution be taken off the table or not approved, so we'll keep you posted, but...
Wasn't there another one that they said that they need more information, new EIR with the...
There's a lot of, there was a lot of what we would consider factually inaccurate information in sort of the whereas clauses or the, but, you know, the punchline in terms of what action they were suggesting be taken, that is really the part that is, you know, everyone can be entitled to their opinion about, you know, the EIR, what have you, but, you know, that was really the, trying to avoid this sort of annexation threat being on the table formally by the city.
The San Francisco was, I forgot the term, in the terms of the sequel, there is a lead agency, then San Francisco...
Responsible agency, not...
They were kind of, you know, the other agencies that we sent, the Dark... There is a name for that, and I...
It's a responsible agency, yeah. And there's an irony here because, you know, we received comments from probably five or six different entities in San Francisco who reviewed DIR, PUC, the mayor's office, the planning department, Public Works and the TA, but, you know, clearly the board's resolution didn't reflect any knowledge of what other entities within San Francisco thought about the project. In fact, some of their recommendations in terms of housing is directly contrary to what the recommendation was from San Francisco mayor's office. So, on the one hand, you have the board telling us you need to do this, and the mayor's office is recommending a completely different land use program, so, you know, even internally they're inconsistent in terms of if the city chose to honor San Francisco's wishes, which wishes do we honor, the mayor's or the board's, so, that's what we say.
I have another question. Oh, did you have more questions about that?
No.
Okay, I have another question about water. Did I, has there been any changes in the amount of water that we're going to be regulated? Or have you heard anything?
You mean in terms of, what do you mean, regulated or...
From the water company, you mean?
From the allocation of water that us, that we are...
You mean like a drought reduction?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I haven't heard anything from the Public Works Director that the city's allocation is being cut anytime in the foreseeable future. I could check into that, but I have not heard that.
Is there a discussion on that?
First I've heard of it, so I don't...
No, I just was wondering if there had been any more information about the drought.
No, I don't have anything new on that.
Okay. And what's the status of the Parkside project, is there anything?
Oh, the Parkside project, the council provided some direction, I think we talked about that maybe at our last meeting, because it had a workshop with the consultants, and there were some revisions to the concept plan, and there's some more work being done through some council subcommittees. Once that work is sort of, and that's sort of at a conceptual level, then when there's some agreement on kind of at a very broad concept level, then they can spin out a plan, and then that plan is what the commission will be looking in a draft form, so. So, we're waiting kind of to resolve these higher-order issues with the council, and then provide a plan per their direction for your consideration with the fleshed-out details. And we suspect that will probably come for you before you Q1 next year.
Okay. And then there was a discussion about this sustainability document that we have, I guess they were trying to have the consultant do some more work on that.
For the Baylands?
Yeah, sustainability...
A framework?
Framework.
Yeah, you know, as part of the council's hearing schedule, they had their first Baylands introduction meeting from Lloyd Zola and the community, and it was a good meeting. But one of the follow-ups, that there was a desire to have perhaps somebody from One Planet Living get into a more sort of in-depth discussion of One Planet Living, sort of the whole concept and the principles behind that, is something that the council might want to consider. So, there's been some discussion about scheduling kind of a one-off or independent workshop on that particular matter.
What I heard was there was some kind of confusion that One Planet is, concept works only when the project is in place, they don't do anything beforehand.
Yeah, there's some questions about, there's a whole sort of question about, and the way the council was, at least part of the question was how do you actually, you know, you create these key performance indicators and objectives, and how do you actually, what are the metrics to track them over time as a project is implemented? And they had some tools they're developing to provide for that kind of transparent monitoring and tracking, and that was part of the discussion, is it's great to have these things in place, but how do you ensure that these aspirational goals actually get achieved through a project? So, that was part of the conversation. And then there's another question about, you know, at the front end, can you, if you're looking at discrete land use alternatives, is there a way to really analyze those in terms of which land use alternative is more or less appropriate to achieve the objectives? And that's not really a tool that's available at this point, so, I mean, if that's part of the conversation, is there's not really an easy way to compare, you know, any of the alternatives in the EIR through some sustainability rubric and say, yes, this one is better, or this one's worse, or, so there is no real quantifiable way to do that analysis as a comparison between plans. So, it's more of, it becomes an implementation tool and measure, and those tools are available because you have more information about how you're actually building something at that point where you can actually put in more detailed data.
That's why I always have a problem with these qualitative type of assumptions and all that. I like more quantitative, that we have a definite set of criteria, this is what we gotta do. And we always seem to be getting in that trap all the time, you know? So, but that's the way, I guess, the city's work.
Well, and the difficulty too of if some of these measurements or these metrics are based on project-specific details when you're at a 30,000-foot program level, and to the extent you have to make too many assumptions about what's gonna happen two years from now, or five years from now, or seven years from now, that sort of affects the...
It's not gonna work. I mean, there's a lot of, I think it's really a lot of time being consumed on that when it can be done very simple metrics, you can give the definite numbers to each of those, but that's my own opinion. And the last thing I want to ask is the appointment of the commissioners, any interviews been scheduled or...
Well, I believe the advertisements went out, and I think the applications close at the end of October, and depending on how many applications, then the council has to set an interview schedule. I would be surprised if you have new, or that process results in the seating of commissioners before maybe the end of the, I was looking at the first meeting of January of having that done, because I think scheduling interviews too close to the holidays or, you know, after mid-November is probably gonna be a challenge.
So, we're gonna continue with the current structure?
Until such time as the council does something, yes.
I know at one point, some of the commissioners were considering not reapplying, have all of the seated commissioners reapplied at this time?
No, but then again, you know, there's still another two weeks for someone to change their mind, but as of now...
I'm not up for reelection, right?
Unless someone I don't know.
You don't want to accidentally forget to...
And we'll see your smiling face for two more years, at least.
Yeah. Anyhow, I don't have any more questions other than the tragic fire that happened today, and...
I can tell you after the meeting.
8 Thomas Avenue. It got burned down today.
The audience knows about...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, 8 Thomas burned down today.
Maybe after the meeting, the audience can explain what happened because the audience was there.
The audience means your wife.
Yes. I have one question. Regarding the soils processing that is immediately behind the thing we saw today, I was wondering the most recently approved or renewed permit for that, what year did that happen, and when did or will it expire? And you could just bring the dates to next meeting if you don't happen to know them off the top of your head.
Oh, it expired, well, they made a timely application to renew, the council adopted a sort of a temporary MOA as they finished their application, their application, I expect it'll be complete and will be before you first quarter next year.
Okay, thank you.
And then what's going on with the closing of the dump? I heard something about...
The landfill closure is the subject of the 17th of November meeting of the city council.
Yeah, the remediation. Yeah, the remediation, like you had your meeting on remediation, they're having their version of that.
Of the closing of the dump site?
Well, it's no remediation in general, which includes landfill closure and remediation of OU 1 and 2.
Uh-huh, okay.
The whole package.
Okay, we have to hear from the member of the audience.
Well, I think after, I think first, I think first we need a motion to close the meeting.
Are we gonna close the meeting before we talk about 8?
I don't think 8 Thomas is an official subject of the meeting tonight, is it?
You can make it. That has been a, you know, subject for a long time, so, why not now? Poor guys, I feel sorry for them. So, anyhow, we can close the public hearing and then we can, I mean...
The meeting.
The meeting.
We can hear from the member of the audience.
I think I lost this.
So, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
If you're in the meeting.
To the regular meeting of October 27?
I'm getting too late. Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to urgent, to the regular meeting of October 27, 2016, at 7:30 PM sharp.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.